Board of Commissioners Weekly Session, if you will. It's Wednesday, May 25, 2016. We're here in Courthouse Square. If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was reminded that I forget things sometimes. And we didn't forget the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, that's for sure.
After all that good coaching, I can't believe you'd do that.
Yes. Well, it's a good day. We need some rain coming here in Marion County. We need to fill that lake up there, the reservoir, get rid of our drought potential. But we have none, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. And so we'll go straight into our consent calendar. But I think we need to do, before that, we need to add something to that.
Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we add an item. It's in Health, approve a resolution submitting the 2016 Rental Assistance Program for Young Adults and Veterans Grant Application.
Okay, a motion. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've added.
And then, I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar. I won't reread the Health one. But first, in the Assessors' Office, approve a resolution amending fiscal year 2016/17 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, or CAFA, grant. Fill it dandy. Clerk's Office, approve Amendment Number 7 to the lease agreement with Downtown Storage and Warehouse to add $235,930 in funding and extend the lease through March 31, 2018.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Excuse me, I did. I just wanted to relook and just what that lease is. And I assume it's for the move-out stuff, doesn't really say. But I assume that's what it is, anyway.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent calendar is done. And we are, we have one action item today, under Business Services, Human Resources. Amy Rose is here with us today. And Steve? Steve, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So, good morning, Commissioners.
Under the ORS 204112, you, as the Board of Commissioners, appoint volunteers to the Marion County Compensation Board. The Compensation Board is responsible for the annual review of compensation paid to elected officials and determining whether adjustments in compensation are warranted. The Compensation Board this year consists of three members who are knowledgeable and in personnel and compensation practices. So first, I'd like to take the opportunity just to thank our three members that did volunteer and participate this year. Stephen Bergman, who is here today and is our current chair, as well as Joshua Graves and Derek Kernan. They did an amazing job this year, and I think they really, one of the best deliberations and discussions and thoughtful conversation I think we've had in many years. The Compensation Board reviewed information from our market comparables established by the Board of Commissioners, which are Lane, Clackamas, Benton, DeSchutes, Yamhill, Lynn, and Polk County. But you'll note that in the data, that with the exception of the treasurer position, which Polk County was identified as a comparable, the Compensation Board excluded Polk County when evaluating the market alignment of the other elected officials. This was done in accordance with the Compensation Board practices, indicating that we should not only consider the type of work performed, but we also need to look at the population and the budgetary sizes of the comparables we use. So with that, and with further ado, I will pass this on to Stephen to review the recommendations by the Board Committee.
All right. And thank you for your time this morning.
Welcome, Steve. Thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you. The Compensation Board is recommending to the Board of Commissioners the following. For the Board of Commissioners, no change in base salary is recommended. A cost-of-living allowance is recommended to increase their base salary up to the amount that would equal 5% from the mean of the total cash compensation, should the nonrepresented employees receive a cost-of-living increase. For the District Attorney, no change in base salary is recommended. A cost-of-living allowance is recommended to increase their base salary up to the amount that would equal 5% from the mean of the total cash compensation, should the nonrepresented employees receive a cost-of-living increase. For the Sheriff, a 1% base salary increase is recommended. A cost-of-living allowance is recommended equal to the undershare, should he receive one. For all the other elected officials, the Compensation Board recommends no change to their base salary and no cost-of-living increase at this time.
Comments?
Well, just so maybe I could understand how it works, and I'm certainly not opposed to it. That's an excellent job. That really isn't the point here. But Sheriff's shows to be up 14% relative to market, yet you recommend a 1% increase. Could you go through that for me?
Absolutely. There were a couple of different factors that led to our recommendation. A few of the most notable ones were the compression data. So part of the statute that creates this board also requires that the sheriff be paid equal to or greater than, I believe, or than the undershare. And so the undershare was making a very close amount in comparison to the sheriff. There was virtually no gap. And so we tried to increase that gap just a little bit, so that there was some internal alignment there with the chain of command and so forth. Also, we kind of struggled to have consistent comparables with Marion County, given the unique nature of our county, especially with our total FTEs and being that we're the state capital. There really wasn't any comparable counties with the unique nature of services that the Sheriff's Department provides. So we tried to factor those two things in, and that was the primary basis for our recommendation. Is that helpful?
Yes, it is. I wondered if that was what it was.
Yeah.
Now, well, let's just ask Noah a question. Ethics kind of thing. So we're obviously dealing with our salary. Shouldn't you technically have to make a statement of potential conflict or actual? I mean, I thought we could get him on this first page. I know we never do, and it's never done, but it went through my mind. All right.
Sorry, respect.
I'm being me.
So we planned this to ask you. This is Noah's first time up on the dice. And we're going to declare that, just in case of the potential conflict, even though there's no raise recommended for the Commissioners here, but we are dealing with our, we're dealing with a recommendation to the Budget Committee, if I want to clarify that.
Correct. Right. Usually the process is to refer it to the Budget Committee for final approval. And there is a COLA potential there for the Commissioners this time, though there's not a salary increase. There could be potentially COLA given, should the nonrepresented receive something.
Is there any way that I can take part of his salary and give it to me?
You're welcome to come and speak at the next Compensation Board and bring that up.
No, I'll take you off the spot. But you could look at it. Don't spend a lot of time. I don't think anybody does anywhere. It just seemed technically it ought to be.
At the moment, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brentano, understanding that it hasn't been our past practice to do it, it may well still be prudent. So if that's the way you wish to proceed, that might well be wise.
All right. Thank you. Now, back to you, Steve. I did have a question, just so I, yeah, let's just leave it there, but others can understand. So I'm looking at the numbers, and you recommend a cost-of-living allowance if nonrepresented receive that. So why wouldn't that apply to others below the 5% target mark relative to market? I'm looking at treasurer, district attorney, clerk.
Sure. So we have kind of a set practices or policies manual that the Compensation Board must follow. Our target objective is that we are at the mean for our comparables. So we felt that the other categories that fall into this, no recommendation and change in base salary, no cost-of-living increase, we felt that they were positioned above the mean average, for the most part, for many of those different positions. So even if there was a cost-of-living increase, they would still be at or above the mean average. Based on the input we received and the guidance we received, we were expecting a very minimal cost-of-living adjustment, if there was one this year. So we were trying to forecast and factor that in. And one also point that I'll note is that we were looking at total compensation for a lot of these. So if you were looking at just base salary, it might not show that we're on track with the mean. But given the 401K contribution that the county has, it really does offset the lower base salary. So that total compensation is much stronger in several instances.
So thank you for that answer, and thanks, because it gives me pretty good confidence that you've thought it over in a rational and consistent method.
There's one thing I would also like to add, that there was quite a bit of deliberation on, was one of the reasons why the Board of Commissioners were recommended to receive one, and some of the others, like as you mentioned, the clerk was not, is for the compression issues with the Commissioners themselves. So they are actually currently, you may not know this, but are the lowest-paid elected officials in the county.
What?
And so.
You get what you mean.
And so one of the things that the committee did review, we gave them a compression chart of the elected officials themselves. And so that was one of the reasons as well that was considered and discussed with the committee, and they agreed that would be a reason why they would give the Commissioners one and not just say no COLA at this time, like they did the other elected officials.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation.
So if it's time, Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we approve the recommendations from the 2016 County Compensation Board regarding compensation of elected official.
So the motion is to recommend to the Budget Committee these issues? I'll second that motion and declare potential conflict of interest, obviously.
Potential, me too.
Or a conflict of interest because of our salaries being in there. So we've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor of this recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is done. Thank you for your service on this important.
Good work, it looks like.
Issue and the thought and analysis that went into it.
Thank you.
Amy Rose, Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have a public hearing today. Did we miss something? I see some smiling faces out there that maybe they wanted to come in.
They wanted to talk. Let's go back.
I'm here to speak to the grant that we like to do.
Let's, we certainly have time, if you don't mind.
The grant that we added?
Yeah. Please.
Yeah, we did it under consent calendar, but if you want to come up, no, explain to us why we approved this important thing.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carrie Moller, Health Department, and this is Sidney Nestor, Program Supervisor for our Community and Provider Services Unit. We refer to as CAPS. CAPS currently operates a rental assistance program. We were here in about 2013 with a grant submission then that we received. As you know, we're seeking your support, and do have your support, to apply for this rental assistance program. It's an addition in serving transition-age youth. That's a focused population of youth about ages 16 to early adulthood. It's a really critical time for youth to get support, to make that successful transition to adulthood. Safe and supportive, safe, affordable, and supported housing is a critical component to individuals who have mental health challenges and are seeking to further get stability and recovery. So in that frame, I'm going to let Sidney talk a little bit about what we're hoping to do.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Oh, I guess I need to be a little closer.
Yeah, I need to. Just, he can pull it up to you. It'll move.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. So as Carrie mentioned, we're really seeking an expansion of our existing rental assistance program. This would serve an additional 15 people who are in that young adult range. So the young adults that we'll be serving will be those who have a serious mental illness and who are coming out of the state hospital or other residential treatment centers, or are homeless or at risk of homelessness. So based on what I've seen with this population over the years, I would anticipate that many of these young adults will be young adults who experienced a lot of system involvement as youth, child welfare, juvenile justice, as an example. And many of the young adults that I've worked with in this population have little to no support system. So no family or close family, friends that they can rely upon for safe, affordable housing options. So this wrap expansion brings a great opportunity for them to receive the support that they really need to build skills, so that they can live a more independent life. The staffing for the program is a rental assistance, a bachelor's-level coordinator-type person, and then a peer support. So the peer support will be a young adult with similar lived experience as recipient of services in multiple systems, and ideally someone who has dealt with rental instability and overcome that.
Great. Comments?
Well, as you know, this showed up on our agenda this morning, and maybe hadn't given it enough study. Just a couple of questions. You said an expansion, and yet I see it's, I don't know that you've mentioned it, $263,000. Is it, it's not an ongoing program? It's something we've already been doing? It's one-time money? Just describe those kind of things, and perhaps a new target? I don't know.
Good questions. All of those, I think, are true, Commissioner. So the expansion, we currently have a rental assistance program serving adults. So the expansion is to now wrap services around those transition-age youth. As with the 2013 grants, the expectation is it becomes part of our base funding, and the funds will roll forward. That's the sort of intention of the dollars through the OHA, Oregon Health Authority. Housing is, I would say, a primary target of services right now. The only expansion we've seen in the arena of housing is in this community-based rental supports, really. So those licensed care facilities are really no longer supporting that. The direction really is to help people get integrated and provide support to them in the community. So this is the direction that I see funding going for a while.
And then I see, and Sidney, you, Sidney, excuse me, is that right?
Sidney.
Sidney.
Like Sydney, Australia.
I knew there was something wrong there. But anyway, you talked about peer support specialist and some type of their guidance, and I like the idea that if it's what I think, one to make sure they're all right, one to give assurance to landlords that it's just not a troubled kid dumped off in his place, that it's a real program.
Right, exactly. So the rental, the rental assistant, the bachelor's-level person, their primary role is that really liaison and collaboration with landlords and property management companies. And the peer support, their primary role is to help the young adult build the skills they need to maintain stable housing. How do you pay your bills on time? How do you manage your money? How do you talk to your landlord if something isn't going well, in a way that's going to be a productive conversation? How do you follow the rules, you know, in an apartment complex? Those kinds of things. Because most of these young adults have not had people to teach them. As they've grown, what are the skills really necessary to live independently?
Sounds good. That's all I can think of.
Good. I see Rod here. Rod, did you have any, did you want to add anything?
Peer support.
Okay. I need that. Right. Oh, it's for you. Yeah. Well, good. So we've already taken action on this item. Thank you for explaining in more detail. And this is, oh, I guess I do have one question, Carrie, or for Sidney. How long is the grant for? It's 263, 15. Is it for one year, two years?
This original funding is for nine months, through the end of the, through the end of the current fiscal year. And then, as Carrie said, the intent is that it'll get rolled into our ongoing funding from Oregon Health Authority.
Okay. And Carrie, does this, does this have any relationship to the other issue we were talking about a couple of months ago?
Not directly.
Okay.
But as I said, it's the direction that we think the Oregon Health Authority is going in terms of service development. It'll be in these apartment living situations. The adult rental assistance program that currently exists, we are serving folks who are in licensed care through that rental assistance program. It's one of the ways people move through.
They're moving through that. Okay. Great. Thank you.
I did think of one other question, number of people you plan to serve under this. I could probably do the math and average apartment.
We initially had 15 in our adult services, added another 15, and this transition-age youth is an additional 15 slots, 15 housing units.
Great. Very good. Thank you for being here today. Thanks for your service to the county. I see our county clerk here. Did you have anything, Bill, that you wanted to say? Come on up. So we'll go back to public comment and allow the clerk to, if you, any objections?
I don't know if he's public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's talk.
Thank you. I came originally on the lease extension, and you took care of that. And, but I was told I should be here just in case you had questions on that. So it looks like that's just fine, isn't it? For the extension for the Archives facility for two years?
Yeah, that was the, in fact, we were curious, that's the Downtown Storage and Warehouse, right?
Yeah. Okay. I did want to give you an update on the election, though. A lot of people think the election's over. It's still going on, and that we're still counting ballots. I'm still waiting for some ballots for some other counties. The mail service is a little slow. And if somebody gets their ballot in any county in Oregon, they can get it, that county can market as received on time and get to us. So we still have a few more coming in. We still have more signature issues out there, where we've sent letters out to people that didn't sign their ballot, or letters out to people whose signature didn't match. They have up until 14 days after the election to resolve that. And then after that, we'll turn around and count those ballots. But there are some preliminary numbers that you should know. We had a 49% turnout, which is really good compared to what we've had in the primaries the last two times. We've only had about a 30%, but not as good as we had back in like 2008, when we had about a, over a 58%, I believe it was, turnout. So we hope we can get those numbers back up again. Some good things that worked out well was we used this room Monday and Tuesday as a polling place, or sort of like the old polling places, so people could come in that needed replacement ballots, or they'd lost their ballot, or they'd spoiled the ballot, whatever it was, or the ballot didn't get to them. They were able to come in here, and we set this up in such a way that we had a really good flow in and out, so people wouldn't have to come upstairs, and make it just easier for folks. Because of limited parking and all that, we wanted to try to get people in and out fast. But another big thing on this election, I think Commissioner Brentano won the trifecta. I can say that now, even though there are still some more ballots out there, but the numbers aren't going to change. In that Commissioner Brentano won very clearly the Republican nomination for County Commissioner, Position 3. But he also won write-ins, or at least is way far ahead, on the Democratic side and on the independent side. So the new independent party, not the nonpartisan, but the independent party. So I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Brentano for winning all across the board as the nominee to go forward in the general election.
I'm glad you said. I frankly wondered how it worked. So barring, and it could happen, a lot of late votes mailed in Multnomah County were probably not real popular, my statements about Metro. Well, it could happen. But thank you. Pretty happy about it, and thanks for telling me that.
Okay.
Trifecta. I'll have to remember that one.
Yes, and of course, where this is run-up to the November election, too, so we hope everything will go smoothly there. The, the number of people that are registered to vote keeps climbing. We're at over 161,000 today. And since the state is going to try to bring forward people from the DMV that had registered at the DMV for DMV services between 2014 and 2015, they're going to try to roll that data over to us in June and July. Our rolls may go up at least another 14,000 through that. And then just through normal attrition, the way things are going, we'll probably have at least another 20,000 voters by election time. And then with that, we also, some of these presidential elections, we get between 80% and 90% turnout. So the volume is going to be, we expect the volume to be great.
Bill, it'd be really interesting, I don't know if the state's going to do this analysis, but it'd be interesting to know, of those DMV registrations, what was the turnout percentage of those people who got registered because they didn't care, right? And the other question, maybe you can, there's a way to figure that out, the people that, I don't know if that's possible, but the other question would be, you mentioned the turnout was lower than, percentage was lower than 2008, but the number of registered voters sounds like is higher than it was in 2008. What would be the number of people who actually voted, physical number of people voted, not the percentage versus 2008? That would be a good, in other words, more voters.
Same thing I'm thinking. You've added the rolls, but I wasn't, not like it matters. I never thought it was a great idea, because you've added a bunch of people that I suspect are not motivated voters, anyway. If you're wondering about your percentage being down when you raise the total number, that could explain some of it.
And indeed, 2008, we had way over 80,000, I think it was 88,000 people cast ballots that particular election, out of maybe in those days, 145,000. This time, we had about a little less than 80,000 people, you know, 10% less in those types of numbers, cast ballots.
Physically.
From a bigger pool.
Yeah. So the number was slightly down.
Yes.
Percentage was way down because of the number. Yeah.
From 2008, which was the big Clinton and Gore, no, Clinton, I forgot, Obama, they brought a lot of people out for that one. And then the last one since then, 2010, 2012, was a general election. It's 2010, 12, and 14, we got just a really low turnout.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Interesting.
Okay. Okay. Well, we almost made it to the half-hour mark. I'll read the.
That is a long one, isn't it? You'll get them. They're coming.
I'll read the Commissioners' calendar from May 21st to June 2nd, or June 1st. And today at 2:30, we do our CCTV taping. At, the location is 575 Trade Street, Southeast. And today at 4 o'clock, there is the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative Task Force Support Services Education Subcommittee here in Courthouse Square at the Salem Conference Room. And we have a holiday, so there's a, Monday is a holiday. And then Tuesday at 1 o'clock, the 31st, the Gallon House Bridge Rededication Ceremony, location Gallon House Road in Silverton.
That ought to be interesting. I hope people pick up on that. It's a special place, so.
Yeah. Did you figure out how to make the gallon look like it was the old jug?
We ought to ask Noah to get all the answers on the gallons, too, all these doing stuff.
Yeah, right, right. What's the history of the Gallon House, and why did they name it the Gallon House?
Well, he knows that off the top of his head.
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, all right. Well, we're giving him all kinds of assignments. Gloria's going to be upset with us, because we're keeping her council busy. And then on Wednesday, the 1st, at 9:00 AM, we're back here for our Board Session, Wednesday the 1st. We have our Woodburn Marion County Monthly Meeting at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street, Woodburn. And then Wednesday. 523 Front Street, Woodburn. And then Wednesday at 2 o'clock, the first Adopt Budget for Service District, East Brooks, East Salem, Labiche, and Fargo, up in the Silverton Conference Room here. And that is probably the lightest published calendar that I have seen in, since I've been chair this year. Thank you to staff. I know, last night I was here till 8 o'clock with the SWAMAC group. They did their presentation. I got, I got here at the end of Covanta's presentation. The Subcommittee made a recommendation to the full Committee, and they unanimously recommended to move forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation that's coming to us. Some good, good questions. Dialogue of, you know, concerns that people are going to have, and Jolene was here, and how we would answer those questions. You could relate to this. One of the, one of the questions will be, or negatives would be, well, we're going to increase truck traffic and the carbon footprint of bringing more trucks in. And we, we were told that these trucks now are going from.
Utah or something.
Yeah, they're going to Kansas and to Utah, so we're actually going to decrease the carbon footprint if that is an issue to somebody by bringing these trucks in. So there was a really good dialogue I heard last night of trying to, you know, think of things that people are going to be concerned about and making sure that we are doing the right thing in our decision-making process. And so that was good. It was good to be there. And I know Commissioner Carlson, who's probably watching us right now. She was unable to be there.
That's why I try to keep you in order. You know that.
Yeah, so I don't get in trouble? Okay. Anyways, they, they're going to, I think the next meeting, there was a topic that, I can't remember what it was, but she's going to be involved in that particular topic. So it was, it was good. United Way last night, changing their direction from being a fundraising organization to an issues-based organization. Interesting, that was our board retreat last week, and a dialogue of what that issue is, should be.
But those dollars can't come in, you can't do it, so.
So, but, but raising dollars as a result of the issue that you're addressing. And I, I really liked the direction that this consultant took them in, saying, and I've got these, I've got them, I think they're up in my office, these third grade reading scores and.
I worked on those, as you know.
Yeah, you have. And it's amazing, you look at a school district like Silverton, and they're hitting like 87%.
Take a look at our old Scotts Mills School. Check that number.
Right. You go to Jervis, Jervis, way down, Salem Kaiser, way down. And it's amazing how these smaller.
Can be done is really your point, isn't it?
It can be done. And so will United Way be able to be a leader in that area and try to bring resources together of other people who are doing it, like yourself, and volunteers and those types of things, and, you know, all the things that come out. I don't know what happened because I had to leave early, but I certainly gave them my input on staying. Don't make the issue too broad. Focus on something that you really can accomplish and measure yourself on. So that was last night. It was a busy day yesterday. I was beat when I got home. Like the, kind of like the Golden State Warriors.
What happened? I, I have some legitimate stuff first.
Okay.
I'll be working on some traffic things starting tonight, a hearing at the Capitol. And I'm forgetting the name of the Commission of Legislators that are trying to look at something, highlighting some of the projects that we're working towards, dreaming of in Marion County. Gordon Road Interchange would be one, Brook Lake Road. Donald is becoming a big one, and I'm forgetting two more, but I'll be talking about those. And then Friday morning, I don't know if I'll go to Woodburn, too, but I'm kind of looking at the finished project, which is an excellent project, by the way, above a year ahead of time and low budget. Those are, you know, those are the.
Which one's that?
Woodburn.
Woodburn, yeah.
And they're just, there's just some loose ends. They're still wrapping up, but it's been in operation now for, it's like a year. I don't know that. The other is the Donald one, and it's becoming the focus of more and more of our concerns here in Marion County. How we're getting impacts that we hadn't anticipated coming from Newburg Dundee and their so-called bypass, which bypasses 99 and dumps them into Marion County, and trying to really work against that and show, and they're going to be there and have an inspection. I sent an email to Cindy Schmitt, our county engineer, this morning. She's out. But I want to be real sure. I'm briefed on what the exact problems are and some of the solutions we've come up with. The state has set $3 million to look at, at Donald Interchange. And now we want to make sure that we, we've done it with OTC and highlighted it there last week, and now get the legislature to know that it is, it is a problem and a bottleneck and actually truly a danger for commuters both on the freeway and in that Donald area, especially with these impacts I was talking about. So we'll be there. But then, so around noon or so Friday, I'm done. I'm sorry. I'll just tell everybody. And then I'm going to continue my quest to remove hatchery fish from the Tillamook area.
Interviews Friday for.
I think it's next Friday.
Environmental Services.
Oh, you think it's this Friday? Or maybe I'm almost done.
I was heard, I heard that last night at the SWAMAC meeting that they were interviewing on Friday.
But either way, I'll do what I have to. But my long-range goal is to.
Catch some fish?
Get out to Tillamook.
Yeah.
Including Monday.
Well, it's good that you're talking about that transportation. I, I got to talk with Senator Winters about it. And I know you've got that priority thing that Barb put together, our list, that'll help. Senator Winters and then Senator Gerard, I talked to him, and then I got to see him.
I think they're both on this tour.
They are. They are. Yeah. I don't, Fred didn't know if he was going to be able to go on the tour. But I sent here the information that you need to know. And then we got to meet. I was over there in the building on Monday and Tuesday. I met with Representative Clem yesterday. Didn't talk about transportation too much, more economic development and just building a relationship. I introduced Dr. Nord from Corbin to him. Saw one of your good friends, Senator Bill Hansel.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And.
Did he offer to have us come out and shoot pheasants next fall or not?
He didn't, but I'm sure we could get him to do that. We'd have to post that meeting, you know.
Whatever it takes.
Have a bunch of tag-alongs. And then, then who else did we see? Senator Boquist, Senator Hansel, Representative Olson, Andy Olson, we met with him.
So they're all aware, and this will be repeating what I do, but.
We're getting there.
At least that's what we're trying to do, get them to know what's going on here.
Yeah. Some good things happening.
Fine.
Okay. Counsel, did we miss anything?
Yeah, give us some final advice. Well, you pay for advice. Let's get some.
Nothing, nothing I'm aware of, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, you know what? My attorney friends tell me when they give me free counsel. It's worth what I paid for it, so. All right. We will adjourn. Thank you.